Nilda Johnson.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Tony Wilson.
Aye.
Robin Bonn.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye. I'd like to raise for public comments.
So just a point of clarification for the public that the item number 11, which was the K5, vote is going to move to discussion only for tonight, so the board will not be voting on that this evening. We're going to move to public comment, and I get to read this. Members of the public are welcome to speak during public comments. Public comments section of the meeting only. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Board members will not respond to comments or questions during this time, but they may follow up with speakers following the meeting. And on the form, there was a place to leave your contact information if you would like follow up. If the total time for public comments reaches 30 minutes, the board may suspend further comments until later in the meeting. Speakers are asked to please conduct themselves with respect and civility toward others, which has never been a problem. Mister, I think we have eight or nine this evening.
Uh, I think we're at 11.
At 11, are we going to go straight through all 11? Or are we not split them? I think it's probably better to go straight through.
I think you better be fair.
Sure. All right.
Yes.
All right. Okay.
So first of all. Nyla, you're first.
But no.
All right.
Sorry.
Nilda.
Nilda.
No, Nilda.
Nilda. All right, Nilda. I did not mean to.
No, it's an ass.
Sorry. And if you want to make sure you turn on the mic.
Yes. Okay, sure.
Please. I know what you said here, but we've got five minutes.
Okay. Is Steve ready here?
Good evening, my name is Nilda Smith. This is my third year in the role of multilingual literacy specialist for RCS. This is the, ooh, that's some feedback.
Is Akia still here? I'll swap back your microphone. That's what it is. We'll let you start over, Nilda.
Thank you.
Make sure.
Testing?
Okay.
I'll say it's us.
Good evening, my name is Nilda Smith. This is my third year in the role of multilingual literacy specialist for RCS. This is the first year in this position that I've been, that, excuse me, that I've seen considerable growth in my students' literacy skills. That is directly related to my instructional practices. Why is this the first year that I've seen this growth? My first two years, I've traveled between two schools, only seeing my students either two or three days a week, depending on school. I work with them primarily in Spanish. The primary purpose of a literacy specialist is to provide support to students who are having difficulty learning to read and write within the regular classroom setting. These students have learning difficulties that must be looked at closely. It's my job to help this school figure this out and exactly what they need. Now that I'm at Pleasant Acres full-time, and I see them 30 minutes every day, five days a week, this has enabled me to give the Spanish-speaking students at PA the same chances as English-speaking students to learn how to read and write. Plus, with the added bonus of doing that in two languages. If we go to grade-level centers, this may or may not be happening. As we know, learning to read and write is a human right, no matter where you were born or what language you speak. It's my understanding that the district may or may not hire more bilingual support staff to send to Northview or Broad Meadow. Right now, the middle school has no bilingual literacy specialists. More than likely, myself or the other bilingual literacy specialists at Eastland will be asked to travel between schools. Well, thank you. This won't be fair to Spanish-speaking students. It will also help to continue the cycle of giving power to certain groups and privilege while keeping other groups in a cycle of oppression and poverty. For the last seven years, our multilingual program has become unified, strong, and effective. Our multilingual staff has given their blood, their sweat, and their tears to our students and our families. We have bilingual literacy specialists, special education teachers, ESL teachers, administrators, and building coordinators who have learned to work together, complementing each other's strengths, and leaning on each other during difficult times. If we are spread across by schools, we will not be able to do that. I'm just trying to shorten my time. So the following information was taken from the article Effective Implementation of Bilingual Programs. And this is from a 1998 article. With bilingual programs, upgrade the quality of instructional programming for multilingual students while at the same time providing a quality instructional program that enhances bilingualism as an advantage. We need to have a clear vision about what we want to do for our program, and we need to prioritize that at every single building that houses bilingual students. Administrators need to be proactive and informed about best practices for our multilingual students. The key to program success is clear communication by everyone involved. If our multilingual program is split five ways, it will weaken, losing opportunities to collaborate, a sense of community and family, and eventually, our students will no longer be given a chance to learn in Spanish. And it will slowly die like it did almost a decade ago. RCS lost many gifted and talented bilingual staff that year. And if we continue along this path that we are going, it will happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rafael.
Good evening. Are you on, Robert? Good evening. My name is Sarah Fiedrich, and I'm the ESL teacher at Pleasant Acres. I've been working in RCS since 2016 in various capacities, all involving the bilingual community. I have, I have noticed that words and definitions have been used so far without the precise academic connotation. What the public understands of those words are the same ones that academia use really us. People right there. When academia use the term bilingual, it means someone that can understand and use more than one language verbally. When most people talk about bilingual education, they're meaning the academic term bilingual. Bilingual literacy is the capacity to read and write in two languages, implying that they can also speak and understand both languages. The term literacy does not exist in Spanish, and all those speakers will use the term bilingual for the same term. Another term that is used out of academic context is transitional bilingual education. Maybe even the program that we have, that's the one that we're reporting to state that we have right now, and it's supposed to be a program with a bilingual approach to use the home language education for early exit. The idea is to move them as soon as possible to the regular mainstream English class. This system is considered subtractive, subtractive, meaning that the goal in English is English mastery, not bilingual, and it's not considered by experts as the most beneficial. We have a twin program happening, I'm talking now of us, that is called Transitional Program of Instruction, or TPI. The difference is that there is no educational approach to the home language because we cannot provide. A term that is never used is one-way dual-language education. And it's not, it's not made up. It's not a made-up name. It's a real thing. By name, we use, by name, we use the TPE to report to the state, but in practice, we're very close to this one. That's the one that we actually almost have in right now. We're very close. This is considered a late-exit program. This program goal is the development of student bilingualism and bilingual literacy. This is the definition by Garcia and Clark in 2018 in the book. This model starts with a 90%, just like in our case, Spanish and 10% English, and gradually, for elementary, it progresses until 50, 50/50 language time allocation. In my own opinion, we're closer to fully achieving that late-exit model. We need to add willing English bilingual students, but we have a space issue that I will discuss later. The last term that is generally understood correctly by everyone is dual-language. It is very simple. Every student receives 50/50 time allocation on both languages. The problem is the support needed to make it work. Champagne International Presidential Academy tried, and they know the word as suspected, and it ended with a one-way dual-language in a present time. The problem that I, I can perceive right now we're having presently is we lack space. Not in the district as a whole, but what it meant. I'll give it an example to make it clear. There are tens of thousands of homeless people in California and Nevada and all this, and California. And Nevada and all the state to the north are practically empty. People don't want to live there. That's it. Our town is more heavily populated on the east side than in the west side. It is simple. The east side housing is mostly generally more expensive than the west. I know because I live right here. We need the room where it's needed. The proposal organization will fill to the brim east of Northview. A developable space to grow will be at PA Bromhead. We just moved the location of the problem, not the solution. There will be no, no room to grow in those schools, and the other school will have plenty of room to stay. This year, the overcrowding of bilingual classrooms is triggered, triggered the change, triggered the change. Bilinguals are the closest everyone was. Last year, we were putting the board a good problem to have. They are not a problem. They are our students, Hispanics, African-Americans, Caucasian, Asian, all of them. And the proposal does not allow space to grow between 1 and 3rd grade and 4th grade in the bilingual program, and we're required that we keep shrinking the English classroom strands to accommodate available classrooms. I think that we need to really have a well-thought-out plan that is planned by the people involved, by the expert in each area, or using the ones that we have in our ranks. Plans done so far do not foresee future problems because they're always remedial. We were doing with our schooling is working, and we need consistency. We have changed it three years in a row, and we're planning the fourth change. Growing schooling, every classroom is not a solution, it's a big patch. I think the board and our district can do better than that.
Ms. Lively?
Um.
Nilda and Rafael, and anyone else that, since I noticed you have written comments. So if you want to send those to me, and Nilda, whatever you didn't get to read, we can put that in the minutes without that speaking, okay? And Sherwood.
Hi, I'm Nilda Lively. I'm the literacy specialist at Pleasant Acres. I've been in the district for 12 years. Um, I am against grade-level centers of any kind. I have expressed all my concerns to the board before, and the fact that we're here discussing this again makes it feel like we're not being listened to. Two years ago, Eastland had over 300 students, so their fifth-grade students were set to Pleasant Acres. When they came to our school, the climate changed drastically. It felt like an us-against-them mentality against us staff. This year, the climate is completely different. The new students that we do have quickly became comfortable with me because they saw that their peers already felt safe with me. Our administration agreed with Eastland that it is too difficult to manage more than 300 students at one school. The recommended plan for next year has one school with 330 students and another with 342. It feels like we're repeating the mistakes of the past instead of learning from them. One concern I've heard is that bilingual classes are large and overcrowded and that we're out of compliance with the 90% rule. The recommended plan does nothing to address this. It does not add a single bilingual classroom. What it does instead is increase the monolingual class sizes significantly, from a district average of 16.3 up to 20.7. We are giving every teacher in the district the same problem that we claimed this plan would fix. We know that students who move schools have a difficult time adjusting because we see it in our students. Our high flyers are overwhelmingly students who have moved in. I can tell you example after example of students that displayed a learning behavior on a regular basis, but now, after multiple years of consistency at Pleasant Acres, are fine and functional. The recommended plan guarantees that every student in our entire community will be forced into this change every one to two years. If we care about the emotional well-being of our students, we will provide them with stability, not transitions. According to Scott's November 15 email, the board is trying to figure out, quote, "how to improve the overall quality of education for all students while meeting the needs of our increasingly multilingual population." I do not see how making classes bigger, putting many more students at two of the schools, and adding unneeded transitions meets that goal. As a literacy specialist, I rely on my relationship and rapport with the struggling readers that I work with. I see the vast majority of my students for multiple years. Without consistency across grade levels, our struggling readers will suffer. I also have the unique perspective of being a former kindergarten teacher. It is a Herculean task to take a group of students and teach them how to do school. I relied on the example of older students to set the tone of our school and model expectations. There are not enough people in the world to effectively support 186 kindergarten schools in one school. I'm advocating on behalf of the students in this community because I hear deeply about them and their emotional health. But my final point is a selfish one. The way that I've been able to stay in this profession despite the odds is by seeing the successes of the students that I've taught. Our fifth-grade class this year is the perfect example. The world shut down for the pandemic when they were in kindergarten, and they came back to us in second grade with the emotional and academic abilities of kindergartners. I am proud to report that out of our entire fifth-grade class, there are only three of our traditional learners that need our district's new phonics intervention. All three of them are on the highest level of our testing app program. There is no higher motivation than seeing my former students thrive and hearing them read successfully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Lindsay Brotherton, a second-grade teacher at Pleasant Acres, and no, not related to John Brotherton. This is my 11th or 12th, if you want to count part of a year that I was at Pleasant Acres, and my 14th year at RCS, plus some seven years before that. Just as, just so you know, I am pretending that you are seven and eight-year-olds because those are my fault. We start each day in our classroom with a morning meeting and our commitment. I say, it is our job as your teacher to keep you safe so that you can learn, and it is your job, and they say, to keep it that way. This allows for them to feel safe and that I am giving them safety. Safety is key for our scholars to learn. It's brain science. In order to create safety, relationship is key. A big factor to relationship is time. Six transitions, kindergarten, first, third, fifth, sixth, and ninth, will not build relationships with students, and it will not be safe. I realize that three of these transitions, kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade, we can't really make those. But the other three are preventable. We can keep students in a grade in a school from kindergarten to fifth grade. But I should also mention that the larger class sizes will not help either. In my 11 years at PA, I have had four principals, a new team almost every year, but the core of the PA still stands, and most of them are here tonight. We are adults, and transition comes and goes, and change is much easier for us with our adult-sized brains. This is not the case for our scholars with still-growing brains. I watch a first grader each day pass my classroom and his classroom and go down and hug his kindergarten teacher. Then he goes to his first-grade classroom. And I want to watch him do this next year, go to kindergarten and hug his teacher, and go to first grade and hug his teacher, and then hug differently. Each day, I see former students in the hallway. I give them a thumb wave, and sometimes they pop over and give me a hug, even though it's not really allowed, you're supposed to say a hug. It's okay because they're giving a hug. This would not be possible for the grade-level centers, sure. Or after school kids, I see fifth graders all the time, not quite doing the right thing. I call their names. I give them a quick reminder, and they're like, yeah, I know, I can do that. When I was, when it was the K2 model, I was a second-grade teacher at Pleasant Acres. The second graders had this "I'm in charge" mentality. And the next year, when those third and fifth grader, or fourth and fifth graders came back, they seemed to change their mentality, and they're like, now I have some older students to be my role model. We also do class buddies to help with those older role models for the younger students. And with a grade-level center, we won't be able to do class buddies with fifth graders or fourth graders. Not only teacher relationships, but also teachers outside of the classroom, like the cafeteria workers, the specials teachers, the support staff, the admin, the janitors, and many more. These relationships matter to students and should be supported with stability, not transition. I keep hearing that this is not the same as what RCS had before, when we had the K2, 3, 5 centers, sister schools, and that is true. It's not the same. This is actually worse because there's more transitions for students. Um, yeah, I've seen that there are other districts that came up in the proposal that we compared to, and I'm most familiar with one of them because I'm from that community. And currently, in Mohammed, there are only four transitions for students, which three of them are required with kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade. But not, um, but only one is unpreventable. That could be preventable if the buildings were in neighborhoods, like Rancho. Our buildings are in neighborhoods, so we should have neighborhood schools in that district. The buildings aren't in neighborhoods, so it wouldn't work that way. I didn't see any other of the other comparable districts with six transitions like RCS would. I could, I could go on with lots of examples, and, um, every staff member here can too. And I realize that there's positives with money and, but mental health is more important. And I can't stress enough how important relationships and safety is for the learning of our students. I would like to urge you to take action and vote against this recommendation for the restructure to grade-level centers and keep the current school structure. We need to grow relationships and safety, not transitions. Thank you for your time.
Storkey?
Hello. My name is Emma Larson, and I'm born and raised in Rancho at Illinois. I come to you tonight as a stakeholder in our children's learning. I'm a first-year teacher, and a lot of gusto I have in pride in my Pleasant Acres family, sort of my people. As a first-year teacher, I know I'm still learning where the bathroom is, I'm aware. But I also am learning how to handle this job in its entirety. I also know I'm invested. I'm invested in this town, in this district, and in our kids. They're my priority each and every day. No one is disagreeing where this impact is going to come. Our kids will experience whatever decision you make when you make it. Our staff will be in whatever example you tell us to lead. I see firsthand how our intentions are received with our kids, how our SEL and our academic content is interpreted at high second-grade level. I see the excitement of students and their families as they have the opportunity to invest right back into RCS. More specifically, the school their children, their children attend. These families are investing in their scholars and their educational and emotional well-being as being active members of their learning. So no, it's not with the dollars in their pockets, but families have a lot of responsibility. I get the opportunity and the honor every single day to speak beautiful words into these children. We touch on peer conflict. We touch on transitions, grade-level academics, and whatever else seven and eight-year-olds want to come up with that day. We cry together, we laugh together, we problem solve together. But most importantly, we learn together. We are a class family. Now, I know it's possible to build a strong class family each and every year, but the pros of our neighborhood schools are that the teachers interact within all student experiences at all levels so that when the chance comes that they get to enter my class, they get to enter my class family, I can better love, care, and teach them. I'm prepared. So board, please consider the class families, the student families, the Rancho community you are disrupting with the move to grade-level centers. As a first-year teacher, I may be able to empathize more than anyone as freshman learning where the bathroom is, who are the safe people to go to? Who are my people? Where can I go to solve a problem? How can I follow this school's expectations? And do I even belong here? Those are questions that will be asked each year scholars move to a new transition in their learning. Our goal should be clear. lessen the unknown. An impact of change to strengthen the families we build in our school. They say it takes a village, so I'm calling on my village Rancho, moving the best efforts for our kids. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Colson? Ms. Colson?
First, I want to thank you for always being willing to bear for me over and over and over again. I know the task that you have in front of you is difficult to stay the least, and you're volunteering your time and energy to do this important, but unfortunately, often a thankless job. So thank you. I've worked at RCS since 2004 and lived here since 2006. My own children are currently at JW Ader and RTHS, and they attended K for elementary. In the past, I've shared with you my beliefs and experiences regarding the grade-level schools, and I still stand by everything I've shared, but I wanted to give you a different perspective tonight. While I was talking or vending to my son about the proposed change yesterday when he was homesick, we started talking about his experience at PA. I asked him what he liked about PA, and without hesitation, he surprised me by saying that his favorite was when he had the same teacher in both 4th and 5th grade. She had chosen to follow, she had chosen to follow her class to the next grade level, and he still remembers that as being one of the most positive things for him and his classmates while at PA. This practice is called looping, and it was especially interesting that he brought it up because I just finished a book called Hidden Potential by Adam Grant, where he references this practice. In a study conducted specifically to find schools that had made some significant improvements to student achievement, looping was found to be a major contributor to that success. Now, I am not suggesting that we mandate looping in our schools. I do believe it can be beneficial, but I also believe it has to be the right fit and that not all teachers, students, or parents would choose that path. However, the reasons that it is impactful and successful is because of the connections built between the teacher and the students. The teacher forms relationships, learns the scholar's interests, what motivates them, what doesn't, and how they learn best. Learning just simply continues from year to year because the teacher already knows the specific needs and where learning left off the previous year. This can result in improved attendance, reduced suspensions, tailored instruction, and supporting scholars' emotional needs. Students are connected, trust has already been established, and because those needs have been met, the brain can operate at the optimal level. Like I said, while I'm not necessarily advocating for looping unless, of course, the teacher chooses to, and I realize it's not the answer in every case, I am advocating for us as educators to allow for the And I realize it's not the answer in every case. I am advocating for us as educators to allow for the positive outcomes however we can. When I asked my son what he liked, his answer was simple. He liked his teacher, she liked him. She knew his interests, where he was academically and personally, and they just clicked. And when I asked him if he thought that his classmates liked it, he said definitely. Those that often struggled from year to year, and he knew who they were, had already bonded with her. She knew how to calm them down or even prevent situations from happening before they started. And the specific kids that he mentioned were not new to the district. Some of them I even had had in first grade. The difference was having a consistent teacher, not consistent classmates. Consistency of adults, whether it be the classroom teacher, principal, specials teacher, interventionist, et cetera, is the key. We need as many experts on our scholars as possible. This, of course, includes families. Building trust and communication with them also takes time. Do grade-level centers create these opportunities, or we struggle, or will we struggle to make that happen? Having more teachers in the same grade level was also mentioned as a pot, a potential plus. In my experience with centers before, the obstacles that we faced with this were that we still didn't have the plan, same plan times because there are only four special options each day. Because we had different students with different needs, our pacing wasn't always in line. We tried to divide students based on the skills that they needed reteaching in. So like in our literacy block, we would divide them up on their specific needs. We quickly learned that this extra transition was difficult for many scholars, and it even sometimes created division amongst our teachers. Our goal was to provide instruction and monitor progress so that we could move them through those skills as they needed them. But because there was so little time for us to get to know those students and form that trust, learn what they needed, and have best to connect with them, we often found ourselves with a significant amount of kids that were unwilling. Similar struggles occurred when we considered departmentalizing. In closing, please believe me when I say that I do welcome change and I'm not opposed to it. I promise I'm not out to prove anything or make your decision harder than it already is. And I will do my best, as I always do, to carry out the initiatives that are decided upon. Thank you for listening and thank you for continuing to ask the hard questions to allow our students seem to be successful.
Ms. Bell?
Sorry, I did not write anything. I wasn't planning on coming, and so I showed up. My name is Tanya Bell. I have, of my four children that are still in school, they, we moved here a year ago. The same day school started, and three of them started at PA, and one started at Ader. And within two weeks of my students starting two and fifth grade this year, um, I realized I had to become as involved in the school as I could. And I then made my mission to hold as many jobs in the district as I could. Two paid, one not. Um, but I did become a parent mentor first. Um, and got very involved with the current third, uh, the third grade teacher who is current fourth grade. And then I became a general TA, had I did a quick status custodian as well. My thoughts tonight is based basically on how my two daughters handled fifth grade last year, and it wasn't great. I brought in four straight A students to the district that excelled, tested well. And those two girls in fifth grade last year struggled. They struggled with the climate, they struggled with bullying. Uh, one of my daughters became a shell of herself within months. And it was sad. And it was sad to see. And when I became involved in the school and I came in and I saw the, the chaos in the classrooms, I saw where it was going. I saw fifth graders that were hiding in the library during lunch hour. Because the librarian was nice enough to do a reading hour, because that's the only place they could escape from the chaos that had ensued, the other school that they hadn't had before. I watched children that had no connections to the teachers, and then there were fifth graders that did. One of the graders that had connections, their third grade, their kindergarten teacher would be pulling them aside and talking to people. But the graders that had no anchors at that school, it didn't happen. This year, I'm a Jenna TA at PA, at Pleasant Acres, and the connections are there still. The kids that are there are helping out with the graders instead of being this chaos entity. They're reaching out, helping the kindergartners. I watched one student yesterday check in with a particularly hard case. And how are you doing, sir? You know, you better, I better hear good things from your teacher. And I watched this kindergarten blow under the attention of an older student. And I wonder what happens to the school when that doesn't happen and that's gone. My youngest child is currently in fourth grade, so next year would extremely affect her. And I'm sitting here wondering what kind of a parent I would be knowing what happened to my two daughters last year. Letting my daughter go into a school that that chaos happens, this would be the first year. Or whether or not as a, as a parent, I protect my child from that and hold her and find somewhere else that is better suited to what her needs are. Because I would hate to see a happy, well-adjusted child who runs around the school. Someone like her mother trying to have as many jobs as she can. I would hate to see her become a shell, like her sister, or struggle and then wait for junior high, find herself again. Or find her voice. I would, I'd hate to see that happen. Um, as a general TA, I, I wonder what a entire school of kindergartners that all need help and there's only so much help looks like. And how many connections can I make with how many kindergartners at once? How many one-on-ones can I have? I'm only one person. And even if you hire a bunch of TAs, how many are you going to keep? Um, as far as fifth grade goes, we were, I know we lost a lot of fifth-grade teachers last year district-wide. We were lucky to keep one amazing teacher at PA. Um, and I would like to see her inspire more fifth-grade teachers to stay and not leave the district. But I'm not sure if what happened last year at PA happens at another school, if we could keep teachers at all, or students. I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I know you guys all know me. I'm Rachel Palmer, and I'm a special education teacher at East Lawn. And I'm here tonight just talking to you as Rachel Palmer, the special education teacher. And um, I'm gonna kind of flip the role because I'm actually really in favor of grade-level centers. Gotta find my notes here. And I just want to go over a bunch of reasons why. Number one, focus curriculum and resources. Teachers and staff can specialize in a narrow range of grade level. Allowing them to develop deeper expertise and tailor instructional practices to specific developmental stages. Resources such as libraries, technologies, and learning materials could be better aligned to the needs of particular age group. Number two, peer collaboration and social group. Students interact with peers who are at similar developmental and educational levels. Fostering stronger, age-appropriate, social connections and collaboration. Grouping students by grade can reduce the challenges of a wide age range with a single school, such as balancing vastly different social, emotional, and academic needs. Enhancing teacher collaboration. Teachers working within the same grade levels are in closer proximity, making it easier to share strategies, collaborate on lesson plans, and align instruction to state or district standards. Professional development efforts can be more focused and relevant for teachers within specific grade bands. Tailored school environment. The physical environment, classroom setups, playgrounds, and restrooms can be designed specifically for the develop, developmental needs of each grade range. School policies, events, and traditions can be customized to fit the age group, creating a more cohesive and age-appropriate culture. Equity and resources. Grade-level centers often help distribute resources more equitably across the district. For example, instead of duplicating specialized programs or services at multiple schools, they can be centralized and consistently delivered. Special services such as reading and math interventionists can be better coordinated for students in specific grades. Efficient use of facilities. Grade-level centers can reduce duplication of resources and space, making it easier for districts to optimize building use and maintain smaller class sizes. I heard um, some people speak earlier about um worried that that class sizes were going to get bigger and I just, I can't figure out where that's coming from because in my eyes, every class would be at the same or maybe one off. So I don't think that class sizes, if we're not losing any staff, um, the class sizes shouldn't grow. Um, stronger focus on developmental milestones. Schools can create program, programming, curricular, and events that align closely with the developmental milestones of specific age groups, ensuring students get the right support at the right time. And now for the special education benefits, which is what I am passionate about. Um, centralized, specialized services. Centralized, specialized services. Grade-level centers allow for centralization of special education services. Speech therapy, occupational therapy, behavioral support, making it easier to develop, to deliver these services efficiently and consistently. Specialized staffs, such as special education teachers, paraprofessionals, and therapists, can work closely with a more focused group of students. Peer grouping. Special education students are grouped with peers of similar developmental and educational stages, providing opportunities for meaningful interaction and socialization. Grouping by grade level reduces the wide age gap. That can occur in general education or research rooms, creating a more age-appropriate learning environment. Improved teacher expertise. Teachers and staff can specialize in specific, specific grade levels, allowing them to refine their understanding of developmental needs and best practices for working with students in those age ranges. Staff are more likely to be familiar with individualized education program goals that align with a specific developmental stage of the students they serve. Increased inclusion opportunities. Grade-level centers often have a larger student population per grade level, which can facilitate inclusion opportunities by matching special education students with general education peers in classrooms or extraperticular activities. Teachers in grade-level centers, they have more experience implementing inclusive practices due to the foster nature of the school. Enhanced collaboration between educators, special educator, special education teachers, and general education teachers can collaborate more easily within a grade-level center to ensure that instruction aligns with IEP goals. Co-teaching models may be more feasible, providing students with additional instructional support. One more.
Ms. Harper? Oh, sorry. Ms. Harper?
Yes. Hi, I'm Sherri Harper, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Broadmeadow Elementary. However, I am not speaking for myself this evening. I was sharing a letter that was written by Lindsay Braymeier, who is a music teacher at Broadmeadow. And I'm able to do this because my thoughts very closely align what Lindsay is thinking. So I'm going to read it now as if I am current. Hello, my name is Lindsay Braymeier, and I am the music teacher at Broadmeadow. This is my eleventh year with RCS and my thirteenth year in education. I am here tonight to express my concerns regarding the proposed implementation of grade-level centers within our school district. While I appreciate and understand Dr. Wood's efforts to improve educational outcomes and address logistical challenges, I believe this restructuring could have significant unintended consequences for students, families, and our community as a whole. I respectfully urge you to veto this proposal and consider alternative ways to achieve our district's goals. I have the privilege of serving as the music teacher at Broadmeadow. Over the years, I have been in a unique position to see every student in our school, from kindergarten to fifth grade. I've had the honor of watching my first group of students grow into college students, young professionals, and even parents. I've seen children who struggled academically, socially, and behaviorally blossom into successful and confident individuals. This has been one of the greatest joys of my careers. I second that, Lindsay. In my role, I don't just teach music. I collaborate with classroom teachers to integrate other subjects into my lessons, whether it's math, history, or reading. I do this because I care deeply about our students' education and want to contribute to their success in every way possible. I care about their futures and want to equip them with the skills and confidence they need to thrive. In addition to my relationships with the students, I've also built genuine friendships with many families. These relationships create a sense of trust and continuity that benefits the entire school community. This is one of the things that makes our school so special, and I'll second that as well. In addition to my relationships with the students, I have also built genuine friendships with many of the families. These relationships create a sense of trust and continuity that benefits the entire school community. This is one of the things that, again, makes our school special. I think I've said that one twice. Um, while I value my personal connections, my concerns about the proposed grade-level centers go beyond my own experiences. I firmly believe this approach will not best serve our students or their families. The mission of Rancho Schools is to build a stronger community by educating our students. This mission emphasizes the importance of unity, consistency, and collaboration in fostering a supportive educational environment. Transitioning to grade-level centers would disrupt the continuity that is critical for both student success and community cohesion. Families rely on stable school placements to build long-term relationships with teachers, staff, and peers. Splitting siblings across different buildings and requiring students to adapt to new environments every few years undermines the stability and creates, it creates unnecessary stress for families. Special education and bilingual programs would be particularly affected by this transition. Students receiving specialized services thrive when they have consistent relationships with building staff who understand their unique needs. Moving these students between grade-level centers could disrupt progress and delay, delay the development of trust and rapport. Similarly, bilingual students benefit from programs that build over time with this single school community. Constantly changing schools would hinder their ability to fully engage and succeed in these programs. Our district has worked hard to establish after-school programs that support academic achievement, social development, and family engagement. Transitioning to grade-level centers may complicate these efforts as well. As transportation, transportation logistics and program continuity can become more difficult to manage, the loss of these vital resources would disproportionately impact families who rely on the after-school care for their children. Another critical concern is the potential loss of staff. Many educators and support staff value the strong connections they have built within their current school communities. One of the greatest strengths at Broadmeadow is the sense of school-family that it fosters. I'll second that. Students thrive in environments where they feel a strong connection to their peers, teachers, and support staff. By dividing students into grade-level centers, we risk dismantling these close-knit relationships, replacing them with a more transient and impersonal experience. For younger students especially, the continuity of seeing familiar faces.
This is Cooper. He's a therapy dog at um Broadmeadow Elementary. Just another reason why uh we would not want to have grade-level centers because the students there, K through two of all met Cooper, have bonded with him.
Ms. Kelly, you're next.
So I haven't, that's my other little, he's there, I need to get.
So I want to apologize. I have been trying to think all day what to say. I came here with the intention of asking you to table this as a discussion and meet action next month or at a later rate. So thank you, Miss Peddick, for being so. Uh, my name is Fran Kelly. I'm the parent of a Northview second grader and an Ader seventh grader. Believe me, this is not the RCS building I hope to be at tonight. I have to leave my son's, yes, all evening at halftime, and I see my daughter's Christmas program to be here. When my daughter looked at me and asked why, I said, I gotta go. I have to speak for you, for your cousins, for your classmates, for your family. This really, she's in second grade at Northview. This plan would never there for third and fourth grade. She'd have one transition. It's not a lot of impact on us. But I think if it's, if this would have happened a couple of years ago, it would have thrown off our whole experience. My kids are a few years apart. They have, through their entire education, they have one year for kindergarten year, his fifth grade year, that they were in the same building. And I think of how much that helped her get through their experience, having siblings in the same building. I think about the teachers that my children have experienced at Northview. Yeah, as, as all of you, I spent many years in the classroom as a student. I then taught for 12 years. I wasn't as strong as these people behind me to survive the classroom. I was one, I was one once who, who got out. About all my years as a student, of my years as a teacher, my years as a parent. I have to say that, and I tell everybody, the teachers that have experienced it at Northview are phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal. I wish I would have worked with teachers with passion that they have. I wish I would have experienced the teachers that they have. Out of those teachers my son had taken by, and now my daughter in second grade, there are only two remaining in the classroom at Northview today. Others have moved on. Others have moved to other schools for administration. I've, I've listened to a bunch of amazing educators. And I think what I want to ask you to make, listen and support these amazing educators by. Listen to the community. Let's hope I'm going to be one of the only parents up here that's open to do more and be able to just sit up here and say, I agree with all of you. But I'm glad I came and spoke. Please give us more time. Consider the full impact. It's, there's a lot more to this. I'd love to discuss some other thoughts with you as well. But please listen and, and support. There's, there's fire, there's passion behind me. And it's hard. I know from experience, it's hard to maintain that as a teacher. So please continue to support me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jermaine's vote. Thank you, thank you, thank you. If you have anything else you'd like to send to us, please do, or this will be tendered. Thank you. There's a lovely comment section.
We have one more that was turned in.
There's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. I didn't see it. I mean, I tried to go through. Who is it?
I submitted it to Tom.
Oh.
She did.
Like Tom's about, okay. Why don't you take your microphone? Get a microphone.
I need my teaching voice if I need to.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Pratt. I'm a second grade teacher at Broadmeadow Elementary School. I have been a teacher at Broadmeadow for seven years and I am speaking on behalf of multiple teachers from Broadmeadow. Members of the board, we are writing to address the upcoming vote on the proposed K-5 grade level redistricting schedule for tonight. As K-5 teachers within the district, we feel it is important to present our concerns and offer our perspective that we believe has not yet been considered. We acknowledge that Dr. Woods has discussed this redistricting plan for some time and has shown great interest in bringing it to fruition in Rancho Schools. However, it was not made clear to us that a vote on this proposal would take place this year. And even more surprising, that it would be expected to take effect by the start of the next school year. This is a significant and complex undertaking and we believe that any plan of this magnitude requires a carefully considered implementation strategy, one that reflects the gravity of the changes being proposed. While we hope such a plan exists, it has not been shared with staff or families for review. This year, our district began implementing an inclusion model by establishing cross-curricular classrooms in each building. This shift represented a major change for both special education and general education staff. While we are supportive of inclusion practices, the implementation was rushed and we feel the process was not adequately communicated. Moreover, the lack of comprehensive training on best practices for effective inclusion has left staff feeling unprepared. The process felt like we were building an airplane while flying it with insufficient contingency plans in place to support both students and staff. If support plans for staff, students and families existed, they were either unclear or, sorry, they were either unclear or not effectively communicated. Given this experience, we are now being asked to accept a plan to redistrict our students into grade level centers by the start of next school year without a clear shared understanding of how this will be implemented. In the past, when similar plans were considered, staff were surveyed and multiple question and answer sessions were held before the vote was taken. This time, however, staff had not had the opportunity to provide feedback or ask questions. Parents were notified via parent square last night, but the communication was vague, offering little information about what the redistricting plan actually entails. The email sent to staff was only distributed prior to tonight's board meeting, effectively eliminating the chance for meaningful dialogue or question. Staff were informed that a question and answer session would occur only after the decision has been made. This approach feels deliberately designed to avoid the pushback that would inevitably, inevitably arise for both staff and families, leaving little room for meaningful input. Students in our district, like all children, thrive on predictability, trust and strong relationships. The proposed redistricting plan would create a situation where a student entering preschool in the 2025, 2026 school year could potentially attend six different schools as they begin high school. Students in special education face particular challenges with this model as self-contained classrooms have already been relocated once in the past year. For the students and families, this would mean disrupting established relationships with teachers and staff, forcing them to adjust to new environments, staff and expectations every year or two. For students in life skills, cross, cross, sorry, cross-cut or social emotional classrooms, there is no clear vision of how their needs will be met in, in a district organized by grade level centers. These classrooms typically serve mixed age groups and offer students the opportunity to spend part of their day in general education studies while maintaining their self-contained classroom as a base. The small class sizes and the classrooms allow for more individualized support and skill development. However, it is unclear how this model would function within the grade level structure and we have not been provided with any details or a clear plan regarding how these students will be supported in this new system. It is difficult to thoroughly assess the impact of any of, of any of this proposal as there is now no concrete timeline or detailed implementation plan available for review. The current plan provides only an outline of the what with no clarity on how, on the how. Over the past few years, it has felt as though the district has become increasingly impatient with the efforts and to implement change. Unfortunately, this impatience often comes at the expense of thoughtful planning and open discourse. The grade level center model has been tried before in this district and it failed at considerable cost to the district. While this plan has been presented as a solution to the challenges within our school district, we are not convinced that its near difference from the current model guarantees it will be an improvement. Dr. Woods has indicated that he is confident this change will lead to some staff departure, but that the majority of the staff members tend to stay even when the changes are proposed. While this may be true, it is important to recognize that the relationships built between staff, students and families are one of, are one important and often discounted reason staff members remain in the district.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks. I'm sorry. I, it was here and I missed it. Okay. Dean over there, are there any others? You didn't know about her. We did have, we did, they got my faults. I want to apologize for the house, I'm starting.
I know. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
My name is Delores Slow. I'm a third grade teacher at Pleasant Acre Elementary School. As well came in not expecting to speak tonight, so I didn't write anything out. It was impromptu and I'm like, okay, yes, I need to speak. And I'm speaking as a former administrator who knows and understands the impact culture and climate has on the building. And disrupting that could potentially cause the loss of some very talented educators who have just begun their career and chose to begin here naturally. For example, my colleague, my third grade colleague and I have taken on student teachers and those student teachers actually came back to innovate and want to teach at Pleasant Acres. That speaks to the collegiality and the culture and climate that we have set up, I've built it. In addition to the relationships between the colleagues, families have also developed relationships with, with us as teachers, our administrative staff. And so many people have already spoken about how difficult it is to build relationships with families. But we have, have been able to do that. Yes, students, we've heard over and over again about students coming back and visiting their previous teachers. The kids need that stuff. The families need that stuff. So, you know, as I think about the relationships that have been built and the culture and climate and collegiality that we have at Pleasant Acres, I've been in education for over 26 years and it does not, there is no other place that I've taught that has those kinds of relationships and collegiality that we have with our families and our, our colleagues at Pleasant Acres. And so I'm, I'm selfish in saying I would like to continue to have that kind of relationship with our families and our colleagues in the building that we are currently in. I am very concerned about losing talented teachers. Again, teachers are not easy to find and when we look at student, the student demographics, it is hard. Teaching is hard. And it's more harder in an area where, you know, you have a diverse populace. Thank you.
The audience, if, if anything you'd like to receive now, we could go over in the back, our regular programming as I speak. That's fine. If you're going to take a moment, just let you, certainly you stay. We're not trying to dissuade you, but. This is a stretch, Frank. K-5 schools are a discussion topic coming up. So if you want to hear the discussion, go through. Don't leave, go ahead and say. Yeah, nine, ten. Please start it here. I have the report. It's actually an agenda. I have it. All right, board, in the, actually Ms. Vaughn is not back yet. Wait a second. Hey, can you see Ms. Vaughn? I think she went to go find water or.
Oh, no.
Okay, I won't say anything. All right, um, the, on the consent agenda tonight, we have the board meeting minutes from our last meeting. The regular financial information, personnel report. I want to bring attention to the board that within the personnel report this month is a revised salary schedule for occupational and physical therapists and also a contract for psychology services, which is because we are short-staffed with psychol, science, school psychologists at the moment. If there are no questions?
Thank you, both. We approve the consent agenda documents and the personnel report that's submitted within stipulation that each individual part, wanted it all re-part. New hire only indicated it on my staff use in RCS board policy. Policy and proceeds to put me right at the page with bills free pay by the finance manager under board policy four fifty.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Second. Nikki?
Nick, Bodu Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston? Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Robin Vaughn? Don Brotherton?
Aye. I think we're good, it's right.
Yeah.
Six.
Okay, so the first thing up is the approval of fiscal year 2024 audit report and the annual financial report. There is a brief summary of the audit in the board packet. There were no findings of any significance in the audit.
Thank you. Questions from board? Dean? Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Bye.
Motion to approve the INS presented. I'll second.
Bodu Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Robin Vaughn?
We're voting to approve the audit.
Aye.
Don Brotherton?
Aye.
Okay, the, there we go. Up next is the resolution concerning and affecting the tax levy for 2025. I didn't put what I was going to say in here. So it's in the board's packet here, I think, okay? So this year, as we presented last month, is we will be reducing the property tax rate. Chris is here if anyone has any questions, but you want me to put you on the spot, right? And it, we are projecting an actual percentage increase of three point. And, uh, it, we are projecting an actual percentage increase of three point six two percent. Um, and with a tax rate reduction of all, uh, greater than a quarter of a point. And all of this, uh, increase in revenue is a result of increased property values. Uh, so this is, the levy is when we, um, were asking for the county to collect the taxes. They typically don't collect them all, so the number that we levy is always slightly higher than what we anticipate. So, um, that is what is in there, there's a resolution, uh, relates to the levy in your packet.
So would you like to read the recommendation or, uh, recommended motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution concerning and affecting tax levy for twelve.
Thank you, Katie, I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Second.
Noto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston? Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Robin Vaughn? John Brotherton?
Aye.
Number eight? You're up, okay.
Eight, nine, and ten are basically the same thing, so for members of the public, we have to read the really long motion and vote on three of these in a row. Um, what they are is we have, uh, bonds that have been issued over the years for facilities improvements. We actually just issued one this year for the pre-K center. Uh, so this is a resolution saying we aren't collecting property taxes. To paper those bonds, we are using sales tax and it's a very long document, but we just have to read the resolution and vote. If you would, please. Tyler's out, I think.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution abating the tax thirty-four levy for the year twenty twenty-four to pay debt service on tax rollover general obligation of school bonds, alternate revenue source. Series two thousand sixteen, what are qualified school construction bonds of school district number one three seven.
And I'll just, uh, for the record, this, this will be in the minutes, but it's in that first line, I should have had twenty sixteen, not twenty twenty-four, so it's not your fault, but just clarify, this is the twenty sixteen bond. The motion's good, someone wants to say.
I'll second it.
Noto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Robin Vaughn?
Aye.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Alright, Tyler, before we try to do this, I'm gonna fix this because it's just gonna trick us. There we go. This is one I know I couldn't do live television. Okay, now I want to do number nine.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution abating the tax thirty-four levy for the year twenty twenty to pay debt service on general obligation rebuying school bonds, school bonds, alternate revenue source, series twenty twenty, and school district number one three seven.
I'll second that.
Noto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Robin Vaughn?
Aye.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Up next, number ten.
Make the motion to approve the resolution abating the tax thirty-four levy for the year twenty twenty-four to pay debt services on general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source, series twenty twenty-four, school district one three seven.
I'll second that.
Noto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Robin Vaughn?
Aye.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Okay, we're done. Now moving to number eleven, just that's thirty, discussion of K-five school organization, okay?
Um, and I do, for every year I ask, we really have to read all three of those and the answer is still yes, so. Um, alright, we're gonna go ahead and jump in and, um, also the, my team over here on this side of the room, I know, I've asked Allison Vidier, who's our director of special education, assistant superintendent, and, uh, Jamie Roundtree, who is the director of curriculum instruction, you guys can wait. They're gonna be chiming in throughout, so I don't know if you wanna get, each of you could have a mic, I know there's two over there. Um, but here we go, um. So I realize that it, it does seem like a broken record that we are again having a discussion at board meetings about possibly reorganizing, uh, K-five schools. And I, I'm gonna start off by providing some background for everyone. Um, in the nineteen seventies, I'm gonna go way back, alright, in the nineteen seventies, RCS had an enrollment of almost five thousand students. As of today, this day, we are at one thousand six hundred eighty-three. Um, which also now includes pre-K students. Um. RCS at the time had a total of six elementary campuses plus other locations. And over that same time period, the village of Rantool has decreased from a community of about twenty-five thousand residents to about twelve thousand. Prior to Chanute Air Force Base closing in nineteen ninety-three, enrollment was already declining and we, we were down to the current four elementary school buildings. Beginning in two thousand six, two thousand seven, RCS shifted to grade level centers. Pleasant Acres and East Lawn served K grades K-two and Northview and Broadmeadow served grades three through five. So the version of history that I hear, I don't think you are on the board then. Were you, I'm just a serious question, you were in two thousand six. And, uh, so that's why we shifted to grade level centers and it's not a hundred percent clear why people have different versions of history about that, but uh, what I've shared when I'm asked is there were several reasons. One was new accountability measures that were a result of the No Child Left Behind legislation. Um, it was an attempt to balance student demographics in a, a dramatically shifting demographic within our community. Um, and shrinking local financial resources, so as the population had declined, uh, resources to support the schools was also declining. These seem to be the main reasons when you ask folks who were around then as to what was happening at the time. And the model of grade level centers ended in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, so last school year. And we have had a K-five structure, I say plus or minus, a K-five structure since twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So, uh, someone emailed me today and asked, well, what was the reason we ended grade level centers in twenty fourteen, fifteen? So I have an idea in my head, I went back, guess what, there are multiple news gazette articles online quoting former board members and the superintendent at the time, so here's what I found. So according to accounts in the news gazette, um, there were significant concerns about student behavior, ongoing issues with transportation, and a lack of academic progress. Around that same time, RCS was also making some other significant shifts. I would say two, the two big ones are at the start of the twenty fifteen, sixteen year, so we went back to K-five schools. That is also the year that Rantool City Schools exited the special education co-op. So we were taking control of providing our special education services at that point. Within another year, we were no longer operating our, our own transportation system, which tells me that we were struggling to operate the transportation system, uh, when we had K five, or the grade levels. So those were two of the big things. We went to first student ever since and we're gonna talk about that later tonight. However, what you can see on this screen, I, I know it's a little hard to see, um, for those of you in the audience, but I'll just tell you this, it's pretty much a straight line. Okay? Uh, and this was from the demographic report that the board commissioned that was presented earlier of the school year. Um, since two thousand fourteen, and that's how far back we went with the study, our enrollment has remained stable, student enrollment in two thousand fourteen, fifteen was one thousand six hundred sixty-two. Right now, it's one thousand six hundred eighty-three. Um, it has gone up, uh, we got really big before COVID, we had this year of eighteen hundred kids. And, uh, but other than that year, um, it's pretty, it's been very stable. Um, so meanwhile, RCS became increasingly diverse. In that time, I'm, I'm going back farther than two thousand fourteen. Um, and I've shared a lot of this with the staff already. Our multilingual program, which is our bilingual program, Rod Baile did a nice job of talking about different ways to talk about bilingual programming. But in two thousand six, the farthest back I could go to get the data from the state, one point nine percent of our students were classified as multilingual. And what I can tell you is in districts that have populations of one point nine percent, there's almost nothing actually impacted programmatically. Their districts probably are not even providing English as a second language services. Students are in the classrooms, they're expected to survive, is what happens when you have that few. Um, but as you can see, that number has increased to, the most recent school report card is more than a quarter of our students are identified as multi-language learners. That does not mean they all participate in our, I, I'll refer to it today as the bilingual program. Um, not all do, but we have a very large, uh, growing bilingual population. So since two thousand six, our multilingual students have become an increasingly large portion of our student population. I'm not presenting that as a problem, I'm presenting that as a fact. Um, but our total student enrollment since two thousand six has actually decreased. Last spring, when the board commissioned the demographic study, that shows these trends are likely to continue. Our student population over the next five years will likely, uh, multilingual students will continue to be an increasingly large percentage of our population. And the total student population they project will decrease, um, slightly, I think they had a decreasing by twenty students. It's on the previous slide. Um, so what the board has been wrestling with and me too, since I came into the superintendency, is how to improve the overall quality of education for all students while meeting the needs of our increasingly multilingual population. And doing this within our limited resources. Um, I would say that a lot of suggestions I get are things that I would love to do, but they involve spending twenty million dollars on a school. Uh, things that simply aren't realistic, or add more staff when we don't have classrooms in the buildings for the staff. Um. So I hope everyone appreciates that also that this process, even though I, I'm fully aware that parents and family, or excuse me, families and staff, uh, may not have been aware of how close the board was to making a decision. Um, this is something that is a process that's been taking place publicly. Um, and as I said already, we're not in a position to build new schools, add unlimited number of staff. Um, we would be having a very different discussion if that was something we could do. And I, I know that the board would be in favor of that, if we had those resources. Um, so the board has been considering organizational patterns for several years uh, in order to address our enrollment, and in the same way that I said it's like a broken record and I've gotten some emails today, oh, I can feel it, why are we still talking about this? Um, I know the border feels that way too sometimes, is because we have to come up with a solution that's going to last long term and we cannot continue to move a part of our student population each year, um, as a Band-Aid to move forward. Um, so some things that the board has done, because again, this is not a new thing. Uh, during the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, East Lawn's fifth graders and most of their siblings and, and one of our, uh, Miss Bell spoke about this, uh, attended Pleasant Acres for a year. This year, the bilingual program has been, uh, split across East Lawn and Pleasant Acres. Uh, I didn't say that in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, that was the year, uh, the board approved. Um, it doesn't affect most people in the room, it affects families who register after the school year starts. And they may not actually attend their neighborhood school because of enrollment, so they could be potentially transferred to, uh, a child may move into the Broadmeadow neighborhood, but we don't have space at kindergarten right now. So they're gonna get transferred to Pleasant Acres, so that was another, uh, fix that has been put in to address some of our issue, our concerns. So, and also at each school board meeting this year, the board has considered various aspects of K-five organization and enrollment. Um, and I've got those lists about here. Um, I would specifically say that, that we had the demographic study that was presented in September. Uh, I did share the family and staff survey data presented in October, and I do want to clarify that I, I've gotten a lot of critical feedback about the quality of my survey, I appreciate that. Um, but I will also add that that survey in no way actually supports or supported grade level schools, uh, that, that is not a, was not a finding in that data, nor was it presented to the board that way. Um, most recently at the last meeting, we, uh, talked about five possible options. And I guess I want to communicate that part of the process sometimes is that board members may ask me, what would you recommend? Um, and that's where we are right now. Um, in past years, we've had a lot of conversation where the boards debated back and forth, and I fully expect that they will still do that tonight. Uh, but I was asked, uh, to make a recommendation, and that's the recommendation from my administrative team. So there are three areas that, when, when we talk about this and, and why we think it's a good long-term decision, is looking at, um, and I've got these listed out on the handout, is, this is about equitable access for all of the families in Rantool. And we'll talk about what that means. Finances, cost effectiveness is a factor. Um, and what we view as the long-term possibility for improving teaching department. So I'm gonna turn it over, or I just talked a really long time, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie and Allison, who are more interesting. And they're gonna talk about equitable access.
Um, first off, Jamie Roundtree, director of curriculum instruction, um, I preface this, uh, as I always do, uh, with something my mom always taught me, which is, you never come into a community, uh, and tell them what they should do. Come in, you ask, what do you need, how can I help? So that's why I'm here, because I was asked to help, um, try to help, problem solve. Um, the other part to this for me is have a passion for it, and it's just part of one of my core values, and that's a huge lens for me. But I also want to say that everyone's, uh, priorities, I value those perspectives because they are perspectives that need to be considered and taken into consideration. So what I'm gonna present to you are just some other perspective. Whether I agree or disagree with them, or I agree or disagree with you, I'm just presenting some perspectives for you. Same way that you presented, uh, to consider, and they're not, but they're not disaligned, um. So I'm not trying to convince board or you all, I also want to, to make sure that we understand, this is, I don't think there's anything, the change is not what people want, right? I don't think anyone wants to do, to, to create this type of change. Um, but based on the models that we were presented with, this one provided the best solution, uh, of those to try to achieve an equitable opportunity for our students. And the two lenses for me was really about, um, equitable, equitable access for our students and equitable experiences for our teachers as well. When I think about, um, some of the comments that were made here, um, I've worked in buildings where culture was phenomenal, and it was amazing. I've worked in buildings where the culture wasn't, I just, I don't know, it wasn't amazing. And the experiences of the students and the teachers in those places were vastly different. One, one thing to consider is the perspective of every student is gonna get the same experience. Um, they're not gonna just be in one school where, hey, they've got all things figured out, they have less transition and, um, you know, more of a veteran staff. Um, and then another building doesn't have that. Those kids are getting experienced all the same, uh, culture and climate at every level, which is something else to, to look at this through. Um, I'm also a huge fan of trying to grow, uh, leadership, uh, teacher leadership, administrative leadership, student leadership, and another perspective is to look at this as an opportunity for some of our master teachers or teachers that bring specific shrimps to the table to share those with other teachers who may not have those shrimps, especially. Especially when you're talking about focusing on specific, specific grade level or, um, a specific instructional approach. And so the professional development opportunities that are there are also, could also be seen as very beneficial for our teachers as well as which would benefit our students. Now, the last part I'll say is, um, I do, I do, I do recognize that, um, this is part that's going to be an inconvenience for a lot of different stakeholders, right? But I think as you think about what your lens is, uh, they're all important, everything, right? All of our perspectives are important, uh, but the key is how do you prioritize? How do we prioritize what's most important, right? As a parent of five students, five children, um, yes, number one for me is safety, right? We had this conversation, right, a lot during COVID where it was, you know, are we prioritizing, like, instruction or are we prioritizing safety, right? And for me, safety is first, right? Then if I feel like everything's safe, then we could focus on, um, education and and the academics. And this is very similar, right, in terms of how do you prioritize? How do we prioritize what's most important for us? And for me, my role is the learning, the learning of students and the learning of teachers. I'm not, I'm a parent, so I understand it's going to be an inconvenience to to a certain extent. But for the opportunity for a child to have an equitable experience, you know, will, will any parent will take that? You know, uh, would, would, you know, would take that so that their student could have the best educational experience, right? Like we always do. So I think that's something else to take into consideration because your child and all the students are now going to have to, to have the potential to have much more equitable experience. So those are some of the things that for me, uh, stood out when I looked at all the different models. Those, maybe how do we provide most equitable, uh, educational experience for both our students and our teachers? Those are the two most important. Love parents, I'm a parent, I'm not, I'm saying the parents' input and and the community's input, uh, isn't, isn't important. Because it is, and I just try to think if we all have to prioritize something, what do we want? So those are some of the things that that when we were talking about, were the things that, uh, stood out to me as considerations. Made this model safe to begin.
What Jamie said. He read off my notes. I think that for me.
You want to make sure everybody knows who you are.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm Alex, Midier, Assistant Superintendent Director of Special Ed. I think a lot of what we have to keep in mind is when we think about the different models, what Jamie was talking about prioritizing, I think we recognize the needs of our teachers through their experience, right? So Jamie's talking about, um, you know, job satisfaction, right? I think there is a lot of stress and the expectations of our teachers that's unlinked right now, right? And so one of the things that I've had to do in years past is what's called a root cause analysis. And with, um, a group of staff, hearing from them, what is it that makes your job so hard? What is it that makes your job hard and what is it that would make it better for you? And what came out of that, and both times that I've done it, is wanting more targeted professional development, wanting more training and support from and for their admin, um, and support with the overwhelming job responsibilities. I think that we're going to get into some of the teaching and learning a little bit more, but I think a lot of this plan addresses those needs. I do absolutely hear the concerns with the transitions. I certainly understand that. I just, I, I, my focus right now is thinking about a long-term plan, as Dr. Wood said, but thinking about how to get to a better place with job satisfaction and retention and support for our teachers while also thinking about equity experience for our students. So one example that I would give right now, and I just looked at at Nusler, so I hope these are accurate from our staffing sheet. A second grade classroom at East Lawn has twelve students and a second grade classroom at Broad Meadow has twenty-two. When you think about equity, there is no way that two second grader at East Lawn and a second grader at Broad Meadow are getting the same experience. I mean, when your brother says having twelve versus having twenty-two, that's a different experience for you as a classroom teacher, right? So I, I, I think the hard thing is we have to come up with a plan, uh, coming up with a plan that addresses the priorities while also hearing the concerns.
We'll come back with questions there. Okay, only two more slides, actually. So the fourth three. What I want to talk about is the cost effectiveness and efficiency. And I know, um, when I was a teacher, I would roll my eyes at this part because schools are not a business. Okay, I understand that. We are not a for-profit entity. However, we're a business because we have to pay the bills and we have to pay you. And community members don't like it when they think we're wasting money. So a consideration in any decision-making for school districts has to include our resource allocation. And I have talked about this with all the board members individually, but for the past several years, we have experienced solid finances. We have had times during COVID where we had, um, money to spend on things that you wouldn't normally spend money on because you have to spend it on specific things. I'm sorry, I'm in talking, inside baseball, but it's, um, the federal grants that were coming out during COVID allowed us to, uh, have healthy fund balances, pay our bills, increase salaries. Um, all of those things are we want to do. However, the financial health of the district right now is primarily due to the state. And the, it's called the evidence-based funding formula, EBF. And RCS now receives about fifty percent of all of its dollars from the state of Illinois. If we weren't receiving those monies, we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't look like we do right now at all, I would say. But, um, unfortunate, I would also add, most school districts get somewhere between twenty and thirty percent of their dollars from the state. We get a lot more, uh, because the state, this funding program is supposed to go put more dollars into districts like ours that's so much higher, uh, low-income students, so higher rates of low-income students, uh, and that's primarily what it's for. But unfortunately, the state is now projecting a three-point-two-billion-dollar deficit for two thousand and twenty-six. At the same time, I would say any reasonable observer knows that we are not going to be seeing an increase in revenue from the federal government, um, for the next several years. Federal funding accounts for twenty-two percent of all of our dollars. We will be fine next school year. I keep saying that, we're going to be fine next year. But I am extremely concerned about what will happen to our district in twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We can choose to position the district now so that we can absorb significant, a significant budget shortfall. If not now, I am concerned that we'll be forced to make cuts in the future that will have a significant effect, negative effect on student programming, and we won't have the opportunity to plan for those cuts. So that's all I'm going to say about cost effective and efficient is that I am very concerned about future finances. I'm not saying this is the scare tactic, it's not a secret that the state of Illinois is going to run out of money. Okay? I'm going to kick it over now to te, focus teaching and learning. Take it away.
What, what lens? All right. All right. And again, these are perspectives to, for us to consider, right? And the opportunities are, uh, when you think about what the load is on teachers. And if you, you know, we did a brief data dive and looked at just the fourth grade teachers, uh, class, fourth grade as a district rather, and where the diaspora of needs the students have in terms of their abilities, right? You've got students that have, um, learning abilities all the way up to eighth grade in one classroom, all the way down to kindergarten. And we're just talking about maybe just even reading per se, right? That's a lot for a two-person team to take on and try to figure out, how do we support that? Call it differentiation, uh, but I don't know if we're really giving our teachers a real opportunity to differentiate because they're really creating groups of, ability group students, um, to try and meet their needs and catch them up without having the true resources to meet those students' needs. So I really think that's a huge factor. And again, this potentially could help address some. I think the other part of the the targeted professional development that, um, you'll be able to conduct amongst yourselves is another possibility where you are actually getting professional development in areas that you are currently working in. Um, it is challenging, uh, being an administrator in a building, um, to try to provide equal professional development, kindergarten, good grade, and make it seem like it's practical and relevant all the time. Which, the students or teachers, the teachers aren't getting what they need, uh, in terms of using their time effectively and efficiently. I think there's opportunity for a lot more flexibility with our students, um, in terms of provide, finding those teachers that have that level of expertise. For instance, we talked about it, uh, someone told about it earlier, when you have your fifth graders who still need instruction that might be much more, people would, I guess, say, would be more relevant to a kindergartner because they're still learning sounds, they might still be learning sign words. And to have all the greats together to move them in ways that would not eliminate them having the opportunities to have appropriate developmental experiences with their peers. And so those are just some of the opportunities. I think the other part is reading specialists, we target at probably our most needed area, and that is K one-two, to make sure that our students do get what they need to learn the code. Because if they don't have that, it's really challenging for the rest of our educational experience. And right now, a current model has not, we have not figured out how to do that in this current model. Meet those needs of the students, especially our students, social, emotional, as well as academically, when it comes to trying to get them caught up or close the gap. So from an instructional standpoint, I think it provides some opportunity. Again, it comes with some challenges, uh, but we have to prioritize what is our, you know, what's most important to us. I know there's a lot of adult feelings, mind-clubbed, um, and and nervousness about what this overhaul is going to mean for our departments, uh, for our schools, for our relationships. But again, right, our main, number one priority is trying to ensure that our students and our children have the best educational experiences all around, and that starts with creating opportunities for them to be successful, um, academically and socially. Not one or the other.
I, I told you. I told you you should come first, Allison. Okay. All right. So.
Sorry, can I say one?
Oh, you go ahead.
Sorry, I, I, because I can go on, but I do want you to know, me, I can't speak for everybody, it's, you know, I want to reiterate this. It's not something I want. I'm not saying I want K, K five centers. I think everybody in here, it's, it's a dream to have a neighborhood student, right? Where you can walk to, same kids, right, families going over. It's, it's just not a reality, uh, to be able to give kids and students, and students and teachers the experiences they need, given our current conditions and where we are in terms of our outcomes. So those are things that I'm just presenting my perspective, right? I'd much rather be saying, hey, yeah, you know, let's keep doing what we've been doing, it's been great. But I do want to, I do want you to know that I don't think I've heard anyone when we've dug into this, because we were given initially four models and then another model to look at. And this model, which wasn't on the original, so we were working with that one. Started to look at this one and we saw some of the possible benefits for it. So, um, I don't think it's a can or can't we, it's just how can we? And what do we need to do to ensure that our students are going to have the best experience? And so, yeah, we all have to ask ourselves, as we think about our own professional. Sorry.
Okay. So, uh, board, on this next slide, I had eight slides where I was going to use a metaphor about how educating a child is like building a house, and I was told not to do that. So I got to keep one slide. My whole team read my metaphor and thought it was weak. So, um, but the idea, I'll do it in one slide. The idea is that we have experts at each stage of the process of educating the child. It's not a perfect metaphor, not at all. But each step of the process has to be done to the best we can so that we have a strong house. I did it. It's, doesn't sound good. I'll stop. I, I, it's so good. All right. So let's go on. I would encourage everyone to review the frequently asked questions document that has been provided. You will see that we are planning for increased transportation access for families. And we want to assure everyone that serious thoughtful planning is going into this recommendation. I would also add that part of the reason I think it's appropriate that the board is not taking action tonight is that there are definitely still some pieces that need to be, uh, more solidified. As, as some of you said, that, um, we need more concrete details about what this is actually going to look like. You know, and especially I know the number one thing I hear from families so far is about transportation. More so, how do I get three kids to three schools at the same time? That's not the same question as transportation, but they do go together. I want, and I do know that in general, the board is not in favor of making parents' lives harder. Okay, I shouldn't speak for the board. Um, I want to acknowledge that I understand family members in the community, um, and our staff understandably may view this as a sudden recommendation, but this is something that has been discussed on an ongoing basis and publicly. So it is my professional opinion that there are substantial benefits to this structure for students, families and staff. Primarily, the structure expands equitable access for our students. It is more cost-effective and allows for improved teaching and learning. The overall goal, as we've said, is to improve student learning outcomes. So I am employed to manage and lead the district. Uh, I'll tell you, the simplest thing to do is to not change anything. And I will continue to manage and lead. Our staff will continue to work hard and we will do our best for the community. I also understand that my recommendation will win me no popularity contests. One teacher in this room gave me a dirty look today. I don't know if you meant it. But I believe this is the right thing for our school district to do, um, in the long term. So as that, I'm going to say, questions for the board? Floor is open.
Let's go first. Okay, it's problem solve.
Can you elaborate a little more on, um, what we've discussed regarding transportation?
Right, so, um, it's hard to give very specific details because we are actually working on what routing would look like. Our members, this, this meeting brought Darcy to the room, so she's the one who helps with transportation. She asked me to don't commit to anything, is what she said. But our goal is, is that if I'm a parent that has children in multiple schools, is that I would have one drop-off. That's the target. And that's also, we don't have a concrete answer on how much that would cost, um, and what that would look like. We would hope to have that soon after break. But as I said, the goal is that a parent would have one drop-off and one pickup. So for example, one of our teachers who has a child and will have children in kindergarten, first grade and third grade next year, asked the question when she got my email yesterday. But this parent. But this parent lives relatively close to Northview. So the ideal is, is that there is a bus stop, maybe the bus stop currently for that parent would be the school and that we're, we're getting the students to all three schools at that point. Yes, this would include needing to work with our transportation provider to make sure that we can scale up any transportation that we need. We know at the last meeting, we presented that if all we did was bus kids that were in a mile and a half, we would already be doubling the number of students that would be accessing transportation, the K five students. But a net cost is actually only adding to bus routes when we do that. So I'm not sure I answered your, I did not answer your question briefly.
I did that. This don't work.
Goodness.
I may be mistaken, but Mr. Roundtree, I don't think there was no, no one that I think that spoke staff wise or parent wise was speaking negative any, anyways about anything. Or saying that they didn't want change. I think everybody that came up here was very positive and very respectful on the situation that they're having at their school. At least that's what I took from it. I think what the public is wanting to know, and I wanted to know, is the transparency that they did not get before this meeting. And one of the data that we supposedly somehow got that they're not getting no information. One, okay, and they ask questions and there's no answer to answer it. We're not giving them an answer, just like as a board member. There's questions that I asked at the meeting, I didn't get a full answer. So I think what they're, what they're looking for is more concrete answer to what are we actually going to do? Just like Dr. Wood said, don't commit to nothing with transportation. That's a huge problem. We had a huge problem with just changes from last year to this year where there was quite a few parents and teachers and grand, not teachers and grandparents that had problems getting their kids to school on time. Now, I know in our meeting, we did make, you guys brought to my attention that's a possibility to do startup times at different schools. How will that affect the teachers? Okay, now they say I'm supposed to go to work from this time to this time, but now I gotta change my time of forty-five minutes to an hour now because of this change. These are things that they dare want to know. I understand fully on what they're saying about, for example, like Mr. Kelly said, with the family. Having a daughter in kindergarten and a son in fifth grade, having that son, hey, that daughter feel a heck of a lot safer than not having someone there at all. I'm not saying that this is negative, I'm just saying that these are going to be thoughts, questions, and definitely in the back of the mind of a lot of these teachers that have built tremendous relationships with these kids. You know, now they go K through first grade at Pleasant Acres. How many kids did we actually lose if we take first to fifth out? What's the numbers? Does anybody know that? Meaning, meaning the total number of kids that we were taken out of PA. Considering that we, we did that buildup, you know, the restructure for pre-K. I'm just asking number wise. And the reason I'm asking that is because we spent that much money building and adding on to the PA. But now we're going to take away first grade to fifth grade. And we're going to add all the kindergartens. Is there a huge difference in number of kids that's going to be going there considering the kids coming out of there? And do, are we, are we not going to have the room? Unless I misinterpret some of the, the things that I've read or looked at here, number wise. There was a speaker that said that she didn't feel that the numbers of the classes were going to go up. Maybe I would, maybe I misread it. But it does look like in some of the, I think in broad metal, the number of students that's in a class is going to be a lot larger. And I could be wrong, I could be reading this wrong. But anyways, like I was saying, I just, I have a lot of questions that I want to know. But I think what the public wants to know and some of the teachers want to know. What are we actually going to do?
I think this will be the time to ask the questions. I'm happy to answer questions.
I mean, that's, that's the way I'm looking at it. I mean, we're sitting there saying, okay, it's okay to go ahead and lose good teachers. I don't think that's, in my opinion, I don't think that's a good thing. You know, I don't want to see teachers leave that, that I feel is benefiting to our district. From emails and texts and stuff that I've been getting, we're losing, we're going to be losing good people anyways. Just because of the fact that we're, we're even considering this and still talking about something that they feel might not work. What I'm, what I'm asking you to, Mr. Roundtree, this speaker, and Dr. Woods, they need more information on what really is going to go on, and that's what they're asking, so that way they can make a decision for their life. You know, they want to, they want to make a decision, hey, do I stay or do I go? And I think that's what some of these people are in there for. They're not in here to try to make our jobs harder as board member. Because when, when, like I said, when I ran as a board to, to become a board member almost four years ago, it had nothing to do with none of this. It had something to do with the education part of it, of our kids in District 137. And like I said, since I've been here, it hasn't. So, you know, I think that's what they're looking at, that's what they, they want us to answer. And I don't think we, and still just listening to what I just heard, I don't think we answered that, that they're, they're really wanting to know. That's my opinion. Thank you.
If you ask, and are there specific questions that you want answered now?
Well, honestly, no, because it seems like some of the questions that's being asked, majority of the people that talk already asked these questions or have asked these questions or emailed these questions to us. A lot of times, and I'm glad you said that, to where it's publicly, it's publicly known. I think sometimes when we get brought into a, to a meeting, let's say one-on-one or whatever, the public don't know what's going on. And if they don't understand what's written on paper or, or even an email that's being sent out, they're wanting to know, they want more clarification, and I do too as a board member. You know, you can feed me all this information and I might not know a dang thing what you're saying. You know, you're giving me the information you want to feed to me. I want to hear information that's legit and factual.
Okay, so what information is that you would like the administration to provide the board?
The right information. The information that I can give to the, to the public, the information I can give to teachers that want to know what the information that they're asking for. I'm not asking for anything, no, no different than what they're asking for. I mean, I'm a parent. I have, I have a child in RCS. I'm not, I'm not trying to say we're doing something that's not right or wrong. I'm just saying, I need the clarification and I need to understand it. And if I can't understand it, I'm sure some of the people out there can't understand it. Especially if it's brought to our attention too late to even look at it or read it. And I'm not saying that's what happened to me, but I'm sure it did to some of the people that are here. Because they, they had to make last minute changes. Hey, look, this is what's going to happen at four me, let's go.
So what you're saying is you want to, you want the district administration to say, this is why we have, this is the reason why we're deciding this, this organizational skills, this, this plan, because you, for us to be more broader to the public, to staff and to the people, oh, okay, this is why we have to do this. This is the reasoning why, as an administrator, we as board members ask Mr. Woods, Mr. Andre, and Allison Nider, which we all met with them, to explain why, as to why. So what you're saying is, let's give them, you guys are asking for more questions. Why are we, why are we getting to this point? Is there a reason why we have to do this?
Our children keep you guys employed. I mean, quite honestly, without children, there would be no schools. So our voice matters. We're parents.
It does, it does matter.
I have a son in special needs that it gets hit constantly. You know, and that's another issue for another day. I know.
Thank you. The board is, you know, okay now.
So it's, 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 I mean, I have some questions myself because I heard a lot about special education. A lot of parents brought up special education. And just, you know, from that, I would, there was stagnation. So how, I guess, Allison, that would be a question for you. How is, how much would that affect or what are the precautions? Or is there anything that, you know, this plan will affect special education?
I mean, I think that's a pretty broad question. I thought Rachel did a really great job of describing some of the benefits. But as far as are you asking, how does it negatively impact? There is no significant impact that would be specific to special ed, meaning the changes that are happening to all groups and all schools are the same for special ed. So if I'm a first grader, I'm going to go to the school that provides services to first grade, right? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Just for the needs of the students to continue, they have the needs to continue to get them what they're getting in the way I expect. The other question I had, some parents brought up, you brought it up, even this was brought up on you guys. You guys didn't know what was going on. We, we at the board knew that there was surveys going on back in the fall, correct? And there was questionnaires being sent out, but from listening to some staff members and some parents was, I mean, that wasn't the case, but we saw, we saw that information, we saw the feedback. So Mr., you're saying that, you know, I, I just want to like understand because that's the feedback I also got here today, like, wow, like you guys are doing this, you're not telling us what you guys are doing, you're just throwing it on us. So, but if there was surveys or questionnaires done in the fall, so then.
Are they right? Are the questionnaires right? We're getting right.
So a, as I said earlier, the survey that was done in October, it may have been end of September, does not support making this change. I'm not, that's not, that survey data is not being used to support making this change. So I'm not, and I'm not. The what?
The parents think that it is.
But I mean, what I'm saying though is, is the board, the data was presented to the board, it's publicly available in the board. And that is a piece of this process. So if, again, I guess what I'm asking is specifically what questions do, does, does the board need more information of? So I'm aware, and I want to clarify my make no commitments about transportation is because I don't, we don't want to make promises we can't keep. And that's an important rule to have, is we're not going to make a promise that we cannot keep. And one of the reasons not to go one way or the other tonight is because we don't have concrete answers on transportation right now. So yes, I'm aware that that is a very specific area that parents are going to want to know. But also keep in mind, most families unfortunately don't find out transportation information until a few days before school starts normally. I do know that if I'm a parent with multiple kids, I need to know how I'm getting them to school. And that is something that we would, if we can't do it, it's, it's nothing, then the board's not going to approve this. Right, and I'm, I'm aware of that. So we need to be able to present a concrete plan for how it works and how it would work. On transportation.
I just wanted to respond briefly to your comment. All of this that we're discussing has been presented at multiple board meetings. Like we've had PowerPoint presentations, we've had the consultant we hired drove all the way there. No, she presented it via Zoom. But she gave us a presentation on our demographic data that we paid her to do, to do this survey record data that we asked for. It's not like we're not intentionally trying to give you information. We've given you information at every board meeting, and we are working through this ourselves. It's, it's as transparent as we can possibly make it.
Robin, maybe I, maybe I'm misunderstanding something because I know from, from the Texas emails and phone calls that I received today, none of these people knew this was going on. And I personally, as a board member, didn't know I was going to come in here and try to make a decision and vote on this being done. Exactly, we're not supposed to be, because we took it off the table. So what you're saying is, if I'm a board member and I didn't know, you expected all these people to know before last night? When would it, when was it put on Parent Square? Last night, what time?
That we were discussing this?
No, it's not about discussing this. And yes, you're right, we have discussed this for, and that's what a lot of people are tired about anyway. Since we keep going over the same thing over and over and over and over. I'm talking about the transparency of this meeting tonight. A lot of these people, and I could be wrong, maybe every single one of them knew about this.
Nope. Are we talking about the voting?
But yeah, basically voting, yes, voting tonight.
Sorry.
They thought, I think, majority of them thought we were going to make a vote tonight and this was going to happen next year. That's what they're thinking, and that's what they're thought. So am I missing something? Are you guys having meetings without me that I don't know what's going on?
My understanding of this is that it was to give us the option to choose to vote. I could be incorrect, but I think that was like a point of procedure. I think that, you know, what we've elected to do is just have the discussion and postpone the vote. But I think it was to give us the option that we felt as though we were prepared for it. We could, we could. I don't think that it was that we had to.
And also, the agenda for this meeting was posted at the required forty-eight hours before the meeting, on which every person in the public has the option to locate and read.
Yes, but we have to make accommodations for television. I mean, it's just, it's real.
Yes, audience please. We gave you your time, and I understand, and this, this is, this is a very tricky thing. So please be patient with us. We go through this ourselves because we're, we're picking ourselves up too. I'm not trying to be rude, but this is our time to like now, for us to speak. Thanks.
I, I feel like I need to address it. Mr. Johnson, you know the board is not met without you. And I think it's, it gives the wrong impression to make that comment that the board is having meetings without or the information from you. All board members get the same information. We cannot meet as a, the board cannot meet as a board without posting a public agenda and being open to the public.
When comments like that are made, it makes it seem as if we're not unified or there's some against one, and that's just not how it is. That's not the case. I'm going to read what I have right now. I want to be one hundred percent authentic. I am in favor of agreeing level centers based on the way that the information was presented to you. However, I do not think that this topic should be rushed. This is something that has been brought up every year since I have been. This is something that has been brought up every year since I have been on this board. Although I do not agree with some of the harsh words that have been said regarding our administration, I would have preferred that this was handled in a different way. I speak about communication and parent and community involvement all the time. In our discussions, I'm continuously telling my fellow board members that we need to become more comfortable with each other so we can start having the hard, thought-provoking discussions that will lead to changes that can be beneficial to our district and therefore our community. I would have preferred that our admin team compiled compile the group that consisted of teachers, parents, board members, and possibly other community members that do not have children in this district. By doing this, there could have been lively discussions about various scenarios. When there is communication and collaboration, more problems are solved. Different people bring different ideas and perspectives to the table. This is what is needed and is necessary before a change this big happens. I don't think that happened. I think that, that our admin team missed a huge opportunity to foster a family with this whole community, which is what it seems like everyone is trying to say in their own different way. I like what you said about a different perspective. I do that a lot. I say things on the screen that I'm looking at because if you're watching a TV program, sometimes it can be a scene and you see somebody doing something and then you see another scene, somebody else doing something. You have the whole entire picture, but the two people in the two different scenes don't have the whole picture. And so it takes looking at things with a different perspective. People are not trying to hurt students. Only think about their own agenda. No one's sitting up here in any of these seats. No one's sitting out there in any of those seats are trying to do that. We are all trying to work together for the betterment of these kids. If we weren't trying to do that, we wouldn't spend so much time on this board. It takes a lot. If we didn't care about the kids, we would not be up here. So I think that what it takes is for us to talk and collaborate with one another. Because there are questions. Because after I start talking to people, there are questions that are not being answered. And it's a big decision. It's a big change. Um, and I know some people think that we shouldn't be asking questions over and over again. It's time to just make a decision and go with it. But to me, it's too big of a thing to just go with. I like information. I can't make a big decision like that without having some type of, um, knowledge behind it, facts behind it. But like Robin was explaining, because I understand that people are, do not like the way that things were presented to them or the timeliness of how everything happens. And I can't agree with that. But on that other side of it, from a different perspective, all of this has been talked about numerous times. But there were sprinkles of people that came to the meetings for months on end. Not even the normal people that come or here. It was just us talking. So in order to be heard, you also have to show up. So if you want to be heard, then please, if, if not, um, I'm not beating with a stick. I'm just saying, please, come to the meetings, talk to us. That's what we want. Let us know how you're feeling about stuff. Let us know what's going on in the schools. Because I also is my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, that in order for this to work, when we're at grade level centers, is that we're all going to be, people are going to be teaching with the same curriculum. Is that correct? Well, I found out that we have this great curriculum that sometimes teachers don't, they don't have to follow it. And we're not. It's just up on the shelf. Some people are following it, but other people aren't. So then how is that gonna work? That's a question for me, from me. I do also have a question about how the, the, uh, are there going to be different start times? How is all this going to work? How is the transportation going to work? These things I don't understand. But I don't know to ask these questions, one, because I'm just a volunteer and I'm not in the school. No, that's not true. I'm in the school a lot. I'm just not, I don't work in school. I mean, not everyone sees me a lot, but some of these teachers see me often in the school. Um, so I need to know how a lot of these, these things are going to work. But I don't know what questions to ask unless I talk to the teachers and the parents, because they bring in different questions like this. Which is why I will go back and say, before a decision is made, I think some type of collaboration where we can all talk amongst each other is going, should happen. I don't know if it will or not, but I think that's what is necessary in order for this to be the best possible solution. Because I know you are, you guys are tired of it, but so are we. And like I said, it's been on a topic every year since I've been on this board. And so if we're going to make yet another change, then it needs to be something that's going to work for the, the majority of the kids across the board. And we need to understand how. And we also need to look at the negative parts of it and why it wouldn't work. And if that happens, brainstorm really quick for a plan B. But by just talking with the admin staff, that doesn't do it. Because you guys are admin. You're not in there like they are. And you guys aren't parents with kids in this district like they are. And so that's what needs to happen, in my opinion, in order to have the best solution for this town, which is what this town needs.
Okay, I could take specific questions I could answer.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I also want to share with everybody that I would say that we actually almost all agree on most things most of the time, including the teachers. Okay? Um, and it's okay to have discourse and disagreement. Um, curriculum, what you said about curriculum and are all teachers following the curriculum is a, uh, I don't think that's a problem specific to grade level schools.
No, it's not.
Right? I think what happens at a grade level school though is if I am the building principal, the instructional coach, um, I'm, when I'm going into fifth grade classrooms, that's all I'm doing all day is going into fifth grade classrooms. And it's gonna be very apparent if one of my teachers is not following curriculum. Um, now, as I say that, we also want teachers to have autonomy and be creative, but I, what you're talking about is like the big picture curriculum. Um, and I think when we're asking a principal or that instructional coach, and I use them as examples because they're in and out of lots of different classrooms and assistant principal, um, is they cannot be experts on what is being taught at six different grade levels. They try really hard. Um, and so I think that's actually one of the ways that we would have less of that, I would hope with grade level schools. I'm not going to say it will be perfect because, um, even when I was a teacher, I taught what I wanted sometimes. Um, Jamie wants to add something?
Yeah, also, also be careful that we don't generalize a lot and say, you know, there might be some teachers who are still trying to find their way to use the curriculum, say, but it's not the majority of the teachers. I think our teachers are working as hard as they can to deliver the curriculum with fidelity. It's a new curriculum as well. So I want to be careful before we paint pictures of, of teachers um, what they're not doing, what they are doing. Because there, there, there's always a lie. And I don't, I don't, when I've seen, I wouldn't say that the majority of our teachers are not teaching, teaching curriculum.
I have no idea if it's the majority or not, but I do know who teachers, and I don't think I said the majority. I think I just said that there were teachers out there that were not. And I know that from teachers that have told me.
And I think all teachers have their moments where they want to teach what they want. And that's, that happens.
That's right.
Start times. And then the other thing we specifically asked was how will transportation work? So I think I've answered that the best I can tonight, how transportation will work.
Right, but you don't really know it.
I mean, I, I, I do have an idea.
You can't say for sure. Yeah.
Correct. And I, and that is going to be the piece that would affect start times. Um, I do want to share that one of the, I think this is a positive for our parents and the daycare providers, because we get feedback from them too, is most likely with a shift to this model. And again, we won't know until we've modeled the routes and things. Is we would have to start to allow parents drop off much earlier um, with supervision so that the buses can drop off at East Lawn and then go to Pleasant Acres and then go to North. So to have that system work, it is going to open up the doors, so to speak, to uh, dropping off earlier and scanning that window. I know right away in the room, the teachers are saying, who's supervising those kids? Um, so that's the next question. And uh, I don't have that answer yet either, because I don't know what times we're looking to cover. We would need to know, um, what the amount of time is that we have to cover and how we would staff that. So a lot of it does come down to transportation. Um, as I said, I, we know what we want to do. We know what we want to do with transportation. And that is a parent has one drop off, one pickup, right? But we have to make sure we can do that before we say that's what's going to happen. Right? We don't want to make promises we can't keep. So.
Yeah.
Um, and that is the biggest piece. So keep in mind, there, there's a thousand, about a thousand K five students. Um, we don't know who a hundred and eighty of them will be next year. We don't know who our kindergartners will be and where they're gonna live. Um, and so trying to map out, it, it's just, it's a big technical problem, right? And I know that's what I, that's my job is to solve these things, but even just figuring out how far every kid is from their house, that took one whole day this week. And don't feel sorry for me. It, but it was, it's a very, um, big problem to work. Um, and, and that's what we're trying to do. But we do this every year normally for us. Okay? It's just we have to model it, um, taking kids to different places is what it is. Does this make sense? Okay.
So, but I think for me, the reason why I'm disappointed is because there are so many unknowns yet. It was put on as an action item so that if we had the choice to go on it, we could. And we don't know enough. And I, but I also didn't know that I didn't know enough. And so I, I am disappointed that before you guys brought to us to do something like that, all these things or more things were put in place and set and figured out before it was brought to us to think about for a vote.
On that, I just pulled it out. I pulled my laptop out. So Dr. Wood shared with us the email that he sent to on the Parent Square as well as the email that he had sent to the staff. Do I think that it should have been worded differently? One hundred percent. Uh, it says it's listed as an action item, which means the board may take a formal vote. Doesn't say that we will be taking a formal vote. It just says that we may. I got a phone call from a teacher last night or yesterday while I was at work and asked me about it. Actually, two teachers. There was on speakerphone. I don't get those emails before I move to my phone. I have to wait till I get home, till I get the school back. So I didn't know anything about it, that the email had been sent out right then, but when I got home, I read it. I think the administration should have worded that as a discussion, just like what we changed it to, or what you motioned us to change to. So there's only one job that I know of, and I helped it for a little while, that they have to be perfect when you start and get better as the day goes. That's being a baseball player. You have to be perfect. When you start, you have to get better. We're, we're trying to get to that better by having these discussions and we're not perfect. I'm not perfect. Ask my wife. But we're trying to get there. And by hearing what you guys have said, what other board members have said, the admin team have said, that's what we're trying for. I agree with you that it should have been worded differently. But sometimes you gotta stir the pot. And by putting it in there as an action item, all of you showed up and it's great. Hey, and congratulations to those that got up here. I did two board meetings in a row and I was scared chips. Sorry. But the squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? By putting it in there that way, we got a lot of grease. And that's for the squeaky wheel up here. And that is all we, we wanted the entire time. And discussion by the thirteen, I believe, we were at people and the seven of us sitting up here, including Dr. Woods, is what we need. So like I said, I just, I agree that it should have been worded differently. Yeah.
And I did, I did take a moment and send a follow-up to the staff. They, it was pretty late, but it was kind of on that point, like, um, let me clarify, they may not be voting. I was trying to be more clear about it. Um, but the, uh, I think what I would, what and I didn't anticipate that we would have a vote. We met and talked last week. Um, we did meet with board members individually. That's for the public to know and that's allowable. Um, and, uh, but I think, as I shared with you, um, next steps, um, and what that would look like, um, if this is something that the majority of the board is comfortable moving forward with. That doesn't mean the board is voting right now, okay? But I know for me and the district administrative team and our principals and our teachers that it's, this isn't gonna go anywhere, then we'll stop now, okay? But I think what the next steps should be is that after winter break and before the January board meeting, um, and I, and I, and I shared this with board and I've shared it with the teachers, is that especially on the teacher's side, that I would be coming out and visiting, um, all schools. I can share that schedule with board members if they'd like to eavesdrop in the room. Um, and I was calling at a roadshow, what we would be doing when going out and giving staff the opportunity to ask questions that they have and would answer them the best we can. Because I would say the staff questions are gonna be very different than parent questions. Um, and then the other part was is yes, as I talked with the board, we were planning to host uh, forums or whatever we want to call it for parents, the same idea, where we would be going out to the schools um, and giving parents the opportunity to hear more detailed information. Because again, and I appreciate what Mr. Johnson said earlier, what is presented in the PowerPoint tonight is a presentation to the board. It's not, it's different from what a presentation to a group of parents who have first graders different than how we would, I would present it to that group. And I hope that makes sense, right? That um, all the board members had an opportunity to already preview all of this material. So I skipped a lot of it. Uh, I didn't get into details to explain it, but um, so my question to the board is, is this something that you want, uh, me to continue and go out um, and get, do the feedback piece? Okay? It's not committing to anything, but going out and explaining. Um, I'm fully aware I'm not gonna convince a lot of people that this is what they're, they're gonna want to do, but um, I think it is fair to, uh, present the information, share the information, answer questions directly.
One more question. Obviously, we talked, we already people talked about the implementation lickety-split, right? You know, that was their concern. Current model will work for one more year. Let's say that we did all the forums and the roadshow or you wanna say it will, and then it comes back, everybody is on board, not on board, however, can we go with the current model for next year so that we would have a year to implement whatever we go with?
That says the guy who's not gonna be on the board next year. Uh, so yeah, I mean, when we sprung last time, the option one, I think, I don't remember the name, but one of the options is to not do anything. It is going, what that means um, is that some of the stressors that are being felt right now at East Lawn and Pleasant Acres um, will continue. And, uh, but I mean, that's the implication. If it continues one more year and then we're having this conversation next year. I'm not saying bad or good. I'm just saying, yes, to answer your question, yes. I'll stop.
Thank you for asking that, because that was my question as well. And I, I almost think it has to be that way because again, I'm going to go back to, I think this it's going to take a lot more planning and discussion with parents and teachers and community involvement. If we want to foster the growth and change that we need to keep saving. Um, MS.
I'm going to say something real quick. Uh, first of all, I wanted to um, thank uh, Ms. Dittier and Mr. Roundtree and Dr. Woods and anybody else that might have been involved in setting this up and trying to get this uh, implemented. It's not a bet. I'm trying to say that this is not going to work or if it is going to work. Um, from the past to the future, of course, we did have a person that spoke up saying that um, it's no different than the past except worse now. Um, but I do want, um, and I think Mr. Roundtree kind of hit on this when you were speaking, um, Ms. Pettit. These teachers are out here doing the very best that they possibly can with what they had and how they have to do it and the way they have to work. That's why they came in here. Of course, they don't want change if it, if it doesn't have to be that. And then you have teachers that, you know, I'm sure um, they come in to their job and do the very best that they possibly can. So we're going to have two sides automatically on what each individual person thinks should be changed or shouldn't be changed. And I'm not saying one's better than other or one's right or wrong. I'm saying exactly what you just said and actually um, what Mr. Wilson just said. We needed more information. Of course, when I went in to that individual meeting, you guys sold me on it. I'm thinking, yeah, this may work. This is, this something's good. But at the same time, I brought up some of the things that was brought up tonight. Some of the things that I just said, such as transportation. All we want, at least all I want, and I'm sure the rest of the board members and administrators and the teachers want is what's best for our district and what's best for our town. And the only way we're going to do that is if we work together, meaning that we have the transparency and information, not only out to the board members, but also out to the public and also out to the teachers. So we can come together and make a good decision. Thank you.
I just want to say that um, every email that you guys send out, I read. I even respond to some staff members, even if it's at eleven thirty at night, but I read every single email that a teacher sends, that Scott sends, every single email I read, regardless of what's going on in my life. And like he said, we had a meeting and it was discussed and it was presented. And we felt confident, but then when I started reading those emails and when I started reading every little word that was quoted to those emails outside, that's why we decided to, you know, handle it first. Um, every teacher that came out to that podium, everything that was said. You guys are amazing. You guys pour your hearts into your students, into everything you do. And RCS is blessed to have each and any one of you. And I know a lot of you personally. I work with some of you. And I know how you guys feel because I was there at one point. And it's hard. It's not easy. Tonight, it was very hard for me to come. But I still am here supporting you guys because I care. So when people like, I know, in my point, and I know that none of us are making irrational decisions. We care. We want to support you. And yeah, there's more questions. But at the end of the day, you know, we also have to listen to our leader, to the people that are leading the district as to how can we best meet the needs of everybody. And it's a hard decision, but I just want you guys to know that I care. We care. I know that we all care. And what you guys tell us, I take it to heart, each and everything you guys say.
So I had my cranky pants on a little bit before I got here, but thank you for your comments because I feel a lot better about what you've said and I really appreciate um, you, your perspective and how you feel this decision would make of an impact on our students and on our teachers. Um, I also prepared a statement. I was going to save it to the end for comments, but I guess I created them. Um, okay, so thank you for your comments. Um, I also have a student in um, the Rancho City School District. My um, son goes to AIDR right now and my other son graduating from Rancho City Schools. And I am a Rancho City School alumni. Um, as a board member, I do not have the luxury of only considering my child. Um, I have the responsibility to consider all of our children as well. And I take that responsibility very seriously. Um, I want to take a minute and go over a few things. Um, over the past couple of months, I and my board members, some fellow board members have all um, spoken with several parents. Um, we've also been spoken to by several parents. Um, some of these conversations have been positive, uh, more than a few have been negative. Um, the board has been accused of being yes men to the administration and just agreeing with everything the superintendent asks of us. Um, we have been accused of rushing our decisions and not giving discussion due diligence. Some of the most hurtful discussion I have been a part of um, has accused us of having some ulterior motive for participating on this board. None of this is the case. I don't want to say that I am all, um, that all my interactions with the community members have been negative because that's not true at all. Um, but I feel like I need to define and defend our positions, or at least my position on this board. I am a public servant by profession. I currently work for the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the state of Illinois. I provide guidance for businesses and individuals that need assistance with grants, community assistance like YHEC, CSVG, and training opportunities. Before I did this, I ran a license daycare. Um, and I was fortunate enough to get to participate in some of our youngest community members' formative years. I spent um, a lot of my life driving as a FedEx driver and delivering your packages in town. And then before that, I spent twelve years as a welder. So I've had a lot of experience in various levels of the community. I worked for twelve years, yeah. Um, sometime during all of this, I worked to receive my formal education and eventually obtained my master's in political science. I'm not telling you my work history out of vanity or um, some other self-serving reason. I'm telling you this because I understand what it means to wake, to wake at three thirty in the morning and start work at four thirty or five thirty. I know what it is like um, to work a job so physical that you want to crumple in a chair at night for a few hours of sleep that you can get before you start it all over the next day. And I know what it is like to struggle to find transportation for my kids to get to school or to make sure they are safe at night while I was in school. I know what it is to sit at the table with my kids while we are all working on our homework. And I know what it is to receive the support from them while I'm trying my best to better myself for them. I know what it is to have a strong desire to give back to my community that has given so much to me. My work in Springfield, I drive three hours to my job. Um, today I left at four forty-five and I drove all the way back and got here just when I got here. I had the option to move to a better commu- or community closer to my job. But I choose to stay in Rancho and make that drive because I believe in this community and I believe in the kids in this community and the families in this community, and I want to watch your children grow. A board member does not receive a salary. We do not get benefits from this work. Most board meetings go long after the cameras are off when we get into closed session. Most board work takes place behind the scenes. For example, board packets can contain three hundred plus pages of documentation that we all must review before we walk through the door because my vote is my responsibility. Some of this documentation can include check registers, discipline reports, sales tax revenue, compensation reports, personnel reports, contracts, other reports. I could go on. A lot of times I use my own vacation days to attend school programs, um, give out gifts to our teachers, like this past Friday, um, and make sure I can be there for the new thirty minute informal discussion we have in the meetings now before board meetings. I is, I miss my own son's school activities to attend these meetings. Like tonight, I am missing his basketball game because I want to be here to listen to your concerns. Each board member here has their own reasons for being a board, a member of this board. For me, I love this community. I appreciate our staff members and I care for your children. I want to make sure their educational experience is impactful. I want our staff to feel valued and appreciated. And I want our community to be united, safe, and prosperous. There have been a lot of discussions about the concern for K five reorganization and we have been accused of not taking the parents and the community into consideration while we debate. We've been accused of rushing the process, so I want to start, oh, we've already talked about all this stuff. We had, you know, board meetings. We went through in April and made a decision that was like a stopgap in twenty twenty-three uh, moving the fifth graders from the LDPA. Um, and last year we went into this discussion again and we ended up, you know, moving the bilingual program. It was another stopgap. And unfortunately, these, these band aid issues did not resolve the primary problem. And um, we've requested several surveys from parents and staff and we had special separate session forums for comments. We took months to review multiple proposals. We've asked for additional options when we didn't agree with the options that were proposed to us. And finally, we ran into the point of no return where we had to make a decision for the next school year. And that is how we ended up with the current system of the split bilingual programs and split classrooms in that, in this situation. Um, we recently just returned to discussing this in the fall. Um, the implementation of the programs that we've done is supposed to be the temporary. These aren't going to be long lasting solutions. It never was considered to be a long lasting solution. We knew from the beginning when we started discussing these things that we needed to come up with a stable, long-term decision that was going to benefit our kids. Um, every board member has had ample time to review documents, add their perspective, ask questions, and provide valuable changes to the K five reorganization plan. Um, we have been working on this issue for almost two years. Our staff deserves to have a safe, collaborative, functional work environment and so do our children. They deserve to have a stable system that will not need to be changed year after year after year. Um, our choice on this decision has been lengthy but thoughtful. Um, but it's time for um, a decision that will benefit all students in our district. Um, I know we can do better. Um, I think we've just been afraid to make the hard decisions and upset people. And I think we just have to sit back and make the hard decisions. That's it. I'm sorry. It was really long. I'm sorry.
You can apologize. Anybody else?
Hey? I think I will answer the question from my perspective that you asked, Dr. Woods, which is should we continue to explore this option? And like do some of that light work and I believe that we should. I, I'm not saying automatically, you know, just like Robyn said, like, you know, there have been a lot of things that have been said about us not doing our due diligence and not caring and it's, it's been a lot. But I think the thing is, we have to do something. We all acknowledge that what we're doing is not working. I'm not saying this is the best option. I'm not saying that when we have these meetings with teachers and the community that things are not going to be considered because I certainly would expect that they would be. But I think that we're to the point where the stopgaps are not working. I'm concerned with waiting another year to make the hard decision. I'm concerned with what, as a person in finance, I am concerned about our finances. You know, it's, it's a really important thing to have money and it is a good thing to have luxury to spend money in ways that we deem fit. Um, and we might not be in that position for forever. So, you know, I prefer us explore this option, look into it more and be able to make the decision versus having to make, have the decision be made for us. So my vote is yes, to continue exploring it, have a roadshow. Uh, and people will be there to talk and support and I, I for one, am so grateful that we have, you know, I saw forty-three on the Zoom. I see like the people who are in this room right now. I'm glad we're having these conversations. I'm thrilled that I'm getting emails and phone calls and we can like have these hard conversations like it is something that we really have wanted. And I know that it's been said that like we've asked for it in meetings as well and, you know, it's difficult to do more than that than to say in a meeting like, please come talk to us. So thank you all for being here. Appreciate you.
Last chance.
I just want to say, I just want to say, the thing that I'm scared about is that it looks good on paper, but once we implement it, it's not going to work. And so that's why I want to have as many answers in place as possible because I feel like that's kind of what happened with the situation that we're in now.
And you know, we heard, you know, in the public communications, this, a nice lady from Brown, I don't know, was speaking on behalf of the teachers, you know, we want to be sure that this is something that is not rushed as far as implementation. Like we need to have, I think, some good answers and have a good plan, so.
And I just want you to know that, yes, it looks good on paper and do I worry um, that, I mean, I've said it to some board members, but this is how superintendents get fired. Is you push for a plan like this and if it doesn't work, um, I know what happens. So it's not something we take lightly, or me, um, at least. Um, I, I had more to say, but then I said that, I sidetracked myself, so. That was. It's almost nine o'clock. We still have a closed session.
I know.
So I'm not trying to cut us off, but so.
Who else? Thank you, board. Sure. Thank you for attending. If you want to do a tense valuation.
For all the fun stuff? Come on, where are you going now?
Uh, yeah, or this is just something that I, it's required, that it's on the agenda. So it's on the agenda. Um, I know you may be, you've been working on it, so we may go to closed session on this tonight. Um, but it is due by February first and I have the responsibility to inform you of that. Are you informed? Okay. Information items. Uh, we did have one FOIA uh, this month, and so that is in your packet and those are public. Student discipline report, the one item that's on information items that I, I am uh, seeking a little bit of board uh, feedback on is um, we are in the last year that we can extend our we are in the last year that we can extend our transportation contract. So we can extend it for one more year. It's my understanding. So it's 10 years since we started with our student. I discussed this with council and, um, and Chris and I agree that we think it's probably time for us to go ahead and put it out for bid instead of waiting another year. But unless the board feels strongly against that, um, if this isn't something where you have to approve asking for the bid, it's you would approve the actual bid once it comes in. Um, so is there any reason anyone would not want us to put this out to bid? And as I've shared with some individual board members who've asked me about this one is, um, there's no, I don't want you to think there's a long line of bus service companies beating down the door. Um, we may not get, uh, very many bids. There's only two main companies in this area. Uh, my hope would be, uh, I think Chris and I are aiming at the March meeting, uh, to approve a bid, but if it can work it, I, if, let's say we only have two companies, I think it would be fair for us to have them each come in and do a presentation. And, uh, yeah, that's it. So we, unless, are we good with Chris and I putting this out to bid? New business?
Do we have anything they want to say?
Last chance.
I want to say something. Yeah. Looking at the board packet. It's been a long day. So, um, Chris, you ate to your tea. You did amazing on that audit.
That's the first time the audit's been applauded.
Yeah, I read it. Good job. And, uh, Allison, Sawtree, thank you for taking the time to explain it to us, even though sometimes you know, it's a little bit harder than it is for everything, all the hard work you guys put into all this. We appreciate, I appreciate you. Thank you for keeping us informed. Cause you know, we get those emails. Thank you.
I do, I always want to say that Tom and Jennifer had a lot to be involved. They just weren't the ones talking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're going to be missed.
I actually have no more. See, I have no.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to say that, um, Mr. Brotherton and I toured the preschool last Friday.
Thank you.
And it was, did I steal your thunder? I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Obviously. No, I was, I'm glad you're saying this, but don't forget we got formed up.
Oh, yeah, we had a weird part of it. Um, but they are doing an amazing job and it is a lot bigger classrooms than I thought they were going to be. And I'm very excited to see it when it's done.
I'm assuming I can't go like this, right?
I want to go.
Well, you can probably go.
I don't know if it's quite right accessible at the moment. Get a good idea of what it looks like. I, I have to see it. Yeah. I, I can visualize like, but I can, oh, I can see it now. I, I can see what it's shaping up to be.
Yeah, those Jackson Joe bathrooms are huge. They're really big.
Yes, next is closed session. I, I'm sorry. I think we do have to go. So all we need for the motion is the top two lines there.
I'll make a motion to move to closed session regarding personnel and collective protection, new cheating mechanism.
I'll say again.
And I am going to go ahead and stop the zoom. Folks, we do have an action item afterwards. And the board, Jen, that we are going to go ahead and stop the, uh, public portion. If anyone's in the room, when we come back, you can.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Somebody will you?
No, I want to stick here as a charger because Michael's dying and if I even dies, I'm going to be.